Yay, meeting have come to order. If there's a document going around, sign it or print it please so that they can read it and just tell us why you're here, okay?
To your way here.
And if you speak, when we get to a topic that you'd like to speak to, just tell us who you are again. Thank you. Approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes that's being distributed from the last meeting with President McCoy and Councillor Kerry because we weren't here, so that'll be approved at another time. Mayor's communications, the mayor is not available.
When Joe and I met, we didn't approve the March 22nd minutes. We passed that over so that we could do that.
Oh, thank you. So let's approve the March 22nd minutes. That was, I was at that meeting, yes.
You did the minutes.
I did the minutes, so I'm feeling comfortable having them.
Yeah, I remember meeting them. So, motion?
I make motion to approve the minutes of March 22nd.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
March 22nd is approved, so we're just waiting on Joe, because I happen to be having surgery. So, the mayor's not here and you're gonna speak to items on the agenda, but you have no other issues to report from the mayor, okay? If you're here, this is public speak time. If you're here to speak on something other than what's on the agenda, now's your chance. Okay. I am gonna skip around because I promised my friend Jessica I would go first. Echodale. We're actually gonna do the two CPA requests first because they're the ones that are, have presentations, have people here to speak to, so we'll start with Echodale Farm. I am simply gonna report as Chair of the CPA Committee to my colleagues here that it was approved eight to zero and it's a wonderful project to rehabilitate and restore Echodale Orchard and I'll let Jessica and, I'm sorry.
I'm also Jessica.
To Jessica. We'll let Jessica speak.
So, I'll just give some background and then I'll let Jess talk about the details of the project, but this is a parcel that's adjacent to the community gardens up on Park Hill. This has been a property that has sort of been on my radar and the Conservation Commission's radar at least in the past five years since I've been here. It's an old orchard that has essentially been abandoned and there hasn't been any maintenance to it. The city acquired it as part of the Echodale Purchase in 2008. And so, the commission over time has been approached by multiple people about upgrading this area. Most concerning is the neighbors adjacent to this parcel, who is Park Hill Orchard, Russell and Elaine Brain?
It's Brain.
Brain, okay. And they've always had concern about how lack of maintenance of these apple trees could potentially impact their crop and their products with, you know, pests, molds, that sort of thing. So, they've been concerned for a long time, but the lack of city maintenance on this property could impact their economic viability of their parcel. So, with that sort of background, Jess has spent a lot of time coming up with the scope of work in terms of the first step to bring this parcel back into some form that is, could be better publicly accessible and cleaning it up at least is the very first step, so just a couple of details.
Yeah, so I consulted with the orchardists at Park Hill Orchard and then various other people who know apple trees and things like that and what they advised would be to actually remove the vast majority of the trees because it would be really costly and time-consuming to get them back to productive health and to also quickly mitigate the viruses that are getting into Park Hill Orchard. So, the proposal would be for tree removal of all trees except for about six or eight trees and those six or eight were identified by Russell Brain as trees that are of interesting variety and would be worthwhile to keep, so be about $4,000 for the tree removal and then clearing of the brush, the under story. And then of those six or eight trees, I consulted with somebody who's an expert at apple tree pruning, the people who I got the quote from for tree removal felt like you need to make sure it's an apple tree specialist to prune them and that would take three years and the cost for that would be around $4,000 as well. And then there are various invasive species on the site, multi-flower rose, there's some honeysuckle, I believe. So, we're gonna actually, as the commission, will go and look and identify what they all are and then we would do an initial management plan with preliminary removal, which would be about $5,000 and a lot of that labor of removal would be volunteers from the Conservation Commission and the community. So, the full request for funds from the CPA is $10,000. The 5,000 additional funds would come from the Conservation Commission, open space account we have that's actually earmarked correct, that Echodale property and then the rest of the in-kind work, in-kind amount would be volunteer work from the commission.
Just wanna say that the CPA was very happy to see the $5,000 match. That to us is very important for CPA funding if we have other grants that help fund the project and the fact that it was a community kind of effort with all the in-kind help. I think we spoke about contingency funding because these are all estimates, but I think the CPA would certainly, would entertain if you came back in a few years and said, you know, our estimates were low, whatever, but I just wanna put that out that there's no contingency in here when you're dealing with estimates, but you feel, as I recall, you felt pretty comfortable with the budget.
Yeah, and I guess the next phase would be to put it out to bid and hopefully we could get maybe even lower estimate for an option.
And the contract that the CPA gave you, you have until 2020 to have the project completed and again, you can come back and say we need more time, but that's in this. We put out these contracts now, the project funding agreement, Peg and Dan, you've seen these.
Yep.
So, as I said, the CPA loved it. Any thing for you guys to add?
I'm curious, so when you had mentioned it'll be a few years before the trees bear fruit, is that?
Of the extra eight trees, yeah. Apparently they do just, because it'll shock the tree to do the full pruning all at once, so it would take three years to just gradually prune back all the extra branches and things like that.
What are we doing with those apples, once they, when and if they ever grow?
So, the way the Conservation Commission is thinking of this is that this is phase one, to clean up the site and reduce the pests that are getting into Park Hill Orchard and then phase two, we haven't quite figured out yet, so there would be a phase two to figure out what to do with the site so that it continues to be maintained. My understanding is as a recreational area.
Yeah, and so, when we did a study with the Conrad School of Landscape Design a couple of years ago for open spaces and trails, planning for that area of the city, this is identified as one of the easiest sites for the city to actually put trails on because we have full ownership of this site. The other pieces, there's, you know, the fee is owned privately, but the city and the state co-own the APR, Conservation Restriction, so it's a little bit trickier to do trails on those pieces. This piece we straight out own and so the commission has been talking about what the trails could look like. There are wet ones up there, we would need to be cognizant of that. There's been discussions of having an edible garden, showcasing, educational components, so the ideas are out there and I think the plan is eventually to apply for a trails grant in order to pay for that work, but we have to clean up the site.
And what's the size of the parcel?
Uh, it's probably in here. It is in here somewhere, I don't remember off the top of my head.
The trails would only be happening there?
It's part of the, of the community gardens parcel, so the orchard piece of it itself is not the full parcel.
Okay.
I can come back, I can get that information for you.
This is the community garden. Yep. Oh, all right, okay. And what's, is this, what is this over here?
This is all wooded.
Okay.
And there's like a stream, maybe intermittent stream that runs through there, so.
And where's Park Hill Orchard?
That's here.
Okay. All right, okay.
Dan, do you have any questions?
Not really. Just to repeat, we said it's great to the CPA chipping in and the Conservation Commission chipping in, since this is property we own, it's, I think we should be maintaining it and not just letting it disease, but that led me to some questions about continuing to maintain it, which it sounds like is not the real answer to that today. The pruning's gonna take three years and then the management plan, that's just to manage the invasive species.
And so that would be multi-year as well and I think once the trees are removed, we'll then come up with a plan for the, what to do with the site so that we don't just clear everything and let it go crazy.
I don't know anything about invasive species, but that plan beat something year to year or that?
Yeah, I would think that once you remove a lot of the trees and vegetation, that actually could cause additional growth for invasive, so there needs to be a plan put into place on how it's going to be managed over that three-year period and then future maintenance for the commission so that they have an understanding. And like Jess said, the commission has an open space account, it has a small pot of money in it that was part of the fundraising effort for Echodale and it can only be used for the Echodale parcels, so, you know, that is money that could be tapped in the future for additional maintenance if invasives come back again and there needs to be additional maintenance.
You're gonna rely on volunteers though to keep an eye on it and do some of the maintenance that doesn't require professional maintenance. I mean, is that the Conservation Commission, the Squamic Trust, or who is that?
For the, who is the manager of the parcel?
For this?
It's the Conservation Commission, they're the management for this case.
Okay. Does the mayor have anything on this one? Anybody else wanna speak to this? Chonster Kuzinski's here, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be back with the Finance Committee.
Ah, we kicked them out anyway. Sorry, I didn't really say that.
Counselor from District One, my precinct, I'm very happy to see this project go forward ever since I first heard of it. Jessica, I think it's been a great, great plan, I'm wondering how we're gonna kinda figure out a way to make things happen. With regard to the apple, the product, when we're all done, the apples and the trails, well, the trails I think we'll figure out with the access and that's fabulous. The apples, I always had a dream that those apples could be used in some way by the community, by the schools, by, in the schools as part of the lunch program.
I had a very preliminary discussion many years ago with the Community Center about if we were able to maintain a lot of those apple trees and if the commission went with the idea of actually leasing the land out to a farmer to produce apples, that maybe there could be an agreement with the Community Center where those products go to the Community Center for their food bank, but, you know, now that most of the apple trees are gonna be taken down and there's only gonna be a handful there, does that make sense? I don't know, but.
We'll see.
You're not replanting more apple trees, you're only gonna maintain.
Well, not at this, I mean, again, there's no design yet for the second phase, we have to keep the first.
The second phase is that part.
See what you got.
Right.
I did have a few questions regarding the specifics of the removal. Do we, I see that there's the brush clearing a day, a three-year plan for pruning, is there an estimate of time for tree removal? I don't see one on the plan.
I think it was, they thought they could do it all in one week? No, they thought they could do it really fast, I wanna say one or two days. The brush hogging would take one full day and then the tree removal, it sounds like they could do it actually quite efficiently.
I had three trees taken down in my yard, it took them an hour and a half and it was big.
An hour and a half?
They were big trees.
Houses in the way?
They just grind them up and apple trees aren't tall, so they don't even have to use a bucket, but they're not tall, right?
No.
They don't even have to use a bucket, they'll come out fast.
And there's also pretty easy access to them.
They just bring a chipper?
The reason I ask is this, someone was telling me that applewood, I know applewood smells very nice when it's burnt, it's hardwood, and they said in 1971, they made a living cutting down apple trees and bringing the wood to Boston and selling it for $365 a quart in 1971, so I would ask that you look carefully at what's gonna happen to the wood and if there is any value for the community. Because it could be a windfall.
We could sell it as barbecue chips.
You're gonna sell it? Cause I'm not. I'm not gonna have a stand with barbecue chips up here.
Well, you have rain barrels.
Maybe you can do that. Rain barrels is one thing, barbecue chips, not my job. Sure, we can look into it, but, you know, the flip side is we might be able to get good numbers on the actual services because they're going to be able to take that and.
It might be part of a barter.
Absolutely, but we should be very cognizant of retail value of the applewood.
We don't know how rotten the trees are, so I don't know how good they are.
Absolutely, I want to say it.
One question about the budget on page six. Not to nitpick, but if no one notices, this is the Finance Committee. The four, on the right-hand column, those four numbers add 14,000, not 15,000.
That's true, how come I never caught that?
I wasn't gonna point that out there, but.
Well, now we have a thousand dollar contingency. Right, there it is.
That's why they call it the Finance Committee.
Well, you know what, that's why we have checks and balances, so someone could check our balance.
What should we do about that at this time? I think we should make it a thousand dollar contingency.
I just mentioned contingency because these are all estimates, so I have no problem with that, but I think.
And Melissa made a good point of saying prevailing wage is going to apply and so these numbers may be lower.
I don't think so.
So, let's keep the thousand dollars in there.
Because 5,000 is Echodale.
This is the total project cost, right?
Right, and the project cost budget can change as long as it doesn't exceed the total. In other words, if you wanna move the money from tree removal to pruning, I don't think that's a problem, it isn't, so if you have a thousand dollars for contingency, let's say you had a bid and the bid was 13,000, well, that 2,000 can be used, as long as it's used for the project.
Right.
If you're gonna decide to use it for some other open space, that would be a problem for the CPA. Jamie, do you have a problem with any of that you just said?
No, it makes a lot of sense and if they don't use it, it comes back to the CPA when the project's done.
Anyway, right, the 10,000 plus five of it is Echodale, so.
There's no power session in CPA pruning, you know, based on this budget worksheet or based on the fact that, you know, but they didn't ask for 15, you said, no, we only had 10, or?
They asked for 10, so if it's actually a budget of 14, they can, they can still get the 10, they may decide to take the four back, but.
So, it may give the Conservation Commission a little bit of a brad.
Right, well, I think the contingency money, given that's an estimate, these are all estimates, isn't a bad idea and as Jamie said, they can't spend more than we give them, it's coming back, so.
I just wanna honor the intention the CPA would give.
Absolutely, and I think, good catch. Obviously, every time we get an application, I'm gonna have to do some math. Oh my God. Okay, how long did it take for this to go through all the places it went through before Mr. Kerry caught?
A lot. We just put it on there just now, he's the only one with that copy, I just wanted to see if you could get it right.
Oh, okay. Good job. I don't have a problem with making that thousand a contingency and I'll report that to the full council. I should say this, I don't want him to do it, but the council has the right to amend any appropriation and we could amend this to 9,000, but that's, I don't think that's necessary, but we have that authority, just so you know that. I wouldn't be in favor of that myself, but it's, it's the council's final appropriation.
It doesn't seem material on this one.
No, and, and it was approved eight to zero. If it was a controversial project and it was approved five to four, you know, five to four and four against or something, it would be something I'd have to bring back maybe, but I don't think so. Okay? Anything else? Is there any other math you need to check there?
Is it for this one?
All right. No one else has any questions or statements, I would like to have a motion since we have other things to do.
Motion made for approval of the following appropriation, $10,000 to be appropriated from the CPA designated fund to be appropriated to Echodale Orchard Rehab and Restoration for the rehabilitation and restoration of the Echodale Orchard on Park Hill Road in accordance with the attached, in accordance with the project funding agreement dated 4/27.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Three to zero. Can one or both of you be at next week's council meeting?
Yes, 17. Okay, and that's it.
All right, I'm gonna jump to the courthouse because that's why a lot of people are here. It has some controversy behind it. I have two hats in this, one is as the CPA Chair and I'm gonna, the way I'm gonna process this is I'm gonna present it from the CPA's point of view, then I'm gonna ask Mr. Ford to supplement what I say, because I'm just gonna bullet point what was discussed. Mr. Ford is the Executive Director of the Hampshire Council of Governments and they manage the building and there are other members of the public who want to speak. After Mr. Ford, I'll ask you to speak, then I'll bring it to the mayor, has a statement on it, and then we'll open it up to everybody. So, let me go over it first. The vote was six to two. It was the first time in, that I can recall in my year and a half of being on CPA that there was a non-unanimous vote or something. This was discussed over many months, I think it was initially presented in October. You were presented with a budget which is something like $1,333,000, which is the total amount of money asked for the community over the phases of the project and the, Todd, tell me if I make a mistake, the request is for 10% from the community, from communities?
Exactly.
That's right?
From all the communities of Hampshire.
On this, you see the budget which shows the ask, this shows the ask of how much was presented from each community, not all of these communities, in fact, a lot of them do not have CPA funding, they haven't, they don't have CPA. And none of those communities have said yes to any funding, but non-CPA, am I correct?
Okay. You're talking about this list right here, Stephen?
Yeah, that's a list of all the communities in Hampshire County. The original ask was some, was 135,365 and I think what was 46 was the original ask or a third of it or something like that. At my request, we dropped it to 25,000. The CPA, the yes votes primarily were because it is a historic building and we are allowed to fund any project historic or as we funded the Conservation Restriction in Southampton in another community, as long as it mat, meets the acts legally, I mean, it's historic preservation, so it does, the courthouse is on the state historic register. We attempted to get something from our historic commission, but as you know, we've had trouble getting them to meet, which is why we just reduced that from seven to five, so they have no comment on it. The committee felt that it was, it was a worthy project, we've heard from some of the community members, you'll hear from here and from Mr. Ford, it's not about the Council of Governments, which some have suggested that we don't have much contact with the Council of Governments now, the Hampshire Council of Governments, it's about the building. They manage the building, but it's not a Northampton building, but it's owned by the people of Hampshire County, it's not owned by the City of Northampton or anything like that, it is located in Northampton. The primary reason for this ask, and you're gonna expand on this, is to leverage the capital asset management bond, which I have four million in my head.
Correct.
Which is the primary source of funding for this. One of the things that irritated me and irritated the CPA committee was that that had to happen, that you were asked, and I don't know if you have anything in writing, I'm gonna ask you again, do you ever get anything in writing asking you to ask other communities for funding?
No.
But apparently he's been asked, Mr. Ford, to get other communities to fund it before they release the bond and we think that's, a lot of us don't like that, but we, the committee, the majority of the committee felt it was good, the project was good. So, the local match for us is 135,000. One of the things we made, I was very, needed to have happen was Northampton had to come out first CPA and they did to the tune of $200,000. A number of other local communities said yes. I'm gonna say, I think it's Hadley said yes CPA, no in town meeting recently.
Correct.
Hadfield said yes last night to 10,000.
Correct.
What are the other communities, Mr. Ford, so I don't have to look at a few?
Goschen said yes to their full ask of 8,000 dollars.
And?
Southampton's still pending, Amherst didn't give me a meeting.
They didn't even ask, they didn't even let you have, come and present.
No.
That was mean.
Yeah.
Since that time, one of the things for this counselor was how many communities, CPA communities, at least, I want at least 50% of them saying yes before East Hampton should and at the time they said yes, but now Hadley's dropped out. That's new information for the CPA. Those against it on the committee felt it was a bad way to fund it, the state should fund it first, they should pony up, they prioritize East Hampton Historic Preservation first, like our town hall, which I certainly agree, that's an important issue, and they got some pushback from the community, didn't want our CPA money going there and I think, I also presented the mayor, which Nikki will present even further on it, to the CPA that she was opposed to it for those same reasons. So, that's the CPA's thing. Since that CPA meeting, something's happened which has, I always look warm, this is me, this is not the committee, to the project because of it going to Northampton and it's, you know, we, I'm a big proponent of doing our own town hall, getting that done, that's a big, since that's happened, and I've defended even in the paper today, the fact that the CPA can do this and should do historic preservation anywhere in the community, but one of the things that irks me and I've been thinking a lot about it, and I listen to people, I listen to people who don't want to do it, the mayor, anybody, and I listen to others about our own funding and what we've done in East Hampton, but what I really don't want is that the state is not funding this until we get some local match from CPA. There's two problems I have with that. One is, it's their responsibility, it's a government, it's a state government building and secondly, we're only, nobody who doesn't have CPA funds is supporting it, so that had me pause when we voted on it, but what has really irked me now is that our match next year, according to the CPA Coalition Trust Fund, is only 15% at the first round. If, if we get another round of 15, we will lose $40,000 in revenue next year as compared to this year. So, in other words, we get a match, the budget, Jamie's here, I have the budget here in front of me. The budget we proposed for next year was $486,000, the revenue for that is a 20% match, that was an estimate. Now, we put in for 486 because the second match, we have to get at least 5%. If we don't, if we get less than that, then we'd have to do, change it, but what it means, bottom line is there's $40,000 less in the CPA fund coming in next year and on top of all that, Bolio, Springfield and Boston, who do just approve the CPA, now you gotta think about it, this is a pool of money, so all the communities get to use it and when they get, when they pool that, if there's a big community like Boston, which has a million dollars or a million and a half in CPA funding, they've gotta match that, so 15% of that comes out of that pool of money. So, unless the House, unless the legislature votes in and the governor signs, House Bill 2615, which guarantees a 50% first round match, next year we could have 5% match because of all those new communities coming in and they're big communities. So, this is new information, so I wanna hear from everybody else, but that is a scary thought for the CPA's funding moving forward and it really bothers me that they won't do this match and they won't release the bond. I'll just say that, that bothers me a lot. I would like to bring this now to Mr. Ford, I'd like you to present arguments for why East Hampton should support it like you did for the CPA.
Sure. Come back here and.
Why don't you come up so that the TV camera can see you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Todd Ford, I'm the Executive Director of the Hampshire Council of Governments, but today I am representing the inhabitants of Hampshire County, which is what it says on the deed of the property of the old Hampshire County courthouse, which we're talking about today, so I feel I'm representing the inhabitants of Hampshire County and I am here in all humility and sympathy for the dilemma that all the communities are facing. This is not an ideal process, it's certainly not a fair process per se, but I do believe it is an opportunity for the region and for Hampshire County and I'll get into that in a moment. But the building is very unique across the Commonwealth, I can't find another example of a building like this that's owned by the inhabitants of the county that doesn't exist anymore since the county was abolished by Governor Weld in 1999. And so, while it is kind of a legacy building of the county and also a legacy building in the state, I agree that it is primarily the responsibility of the Commonwealth to fund the restoration of the project. It's unclear in the DKM report for the courthouse work that they had put out. It's unclear in the DCAM report for the courthouse work that they had put out, what monies of that Phase One of four Hampshire County were going to go towards this particular building, or if it was all going to be in the other parts of the facility. But this building, the old Hampshire County courthouse, is a part of the court. The third floor is our Superior Court Room, the basement is the Hampshire County Law Library, so this is a regional resource for East Hampton and the rest of the county. So it is in fact a huge structure, and the majority of the restoration should be coming from the state. The reason why I think it's an opportunity is because if you look across western Massachusetts, I think you're going to see a fairly substantial funding hole in the middle of the region, and that is Hampshire County. You look up in Greenfield, they have a brand-new sixty-six million dollar courthouse in the middle of Greenfield. They have a transit center that costs ten point four million dollars. Have you seen the train station in Northampton? It looks like something in Montana, it's a wood-framed building. We don't receive that kind of funding. In Springfield, they spent ninety-five million dollars on the union station. Here in Hampshire County, we consistently fail to get large-scale investments from the federal government and the state government, and I think this presents an opportunity to start to shift that dialogue, to come together around a project, it is a shared legacy project, to have the communities leverage their critical donations into a four million dollar investment from the state, so that we can restore the building, have it something that we as a region and as a county can be proud of, and it can continue to serve all the residents of Hampshire County moving forward. So that's why when we decided to start involving the communities with their community preservation funds and the communities without their community preservation funds, to begin investing in the process to leverage those funds. Now, we also, I also passed out this, just to remind you that we are, as the caretakers of the building, and on behalf of the inhabitants of Hampshire County, attempting to leave no stone unturned when it comes to funding. So as you know, Northampton gave two hundred thousand dollars, Goshen eight thousand, Hatfield as of last night, ten thousand, so the subtotal from the, from the community so far is two hundred and eighteen thousand. We've also gone after the, the banks that serve the region, and they've donated thirty-eight thousand dollars so far. We've also had private fundraising, we've had a donation from the Grossbeck Foundation, we've worked with the attorneys to create a memorial plaque that starts at a thousand, that's going to grow as we grow that program. And we've also raised twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars from our Biobrick campaign, private citizens and businesses donating. We also applied for and received the twenty-five thousand mass historic commission grant for the two thousand and eleven assessment, we have an additional one hundred thousand dollar application pending for this phase two of the work. And the Commonwealth, two years ago, did release five hundred thousand of that four million dollar bond, so we're looking for the release of one point three million dollars in this next phase. All the communities, including Northampton and Hatfield, in this recent round of CPA donations, have made their award contingent on the release of funds from the state.
This award too, by the way, counselors, they, they don't get any money until the state awards.
Wrong.
If we vote on it, there's still no money going on until.
Right. And so that, that provides us with some leverage to then go to the delegation and say, and show them the local support and say, but we don't get any of this local support from a financial point of view until the state does what's right and release the one point three million dollars that's already been set aside by our biggest representative, Kocat and Sibek and others, but we need the money released by DCAM, and that's where the holdup is.
What is DCAM?
The Department of Capital Asset Management. And so this provides us that leverage, that pressure to be able to take the funds that you've set aside, which I get are critical to your community as well, but to leverage a four million dollar investment from the state. So I hope you look favorably at it. I believe we are seeing some momentum, especially with the Hatfield vote last night. I am in constant contact with the delegation, just had conversations with them earlier this week, we're going to have a meeting with the entire delegation in the next several weeks, and this will be part of that discussion. So I hope you vote favorably on it, and we come together as a county and as a people and restore the shared resource. I'm here to answer any more questions.
Before I open it up to the public, questions from counselors, or Mr. Ford, JP, anybody?
Is there any, so who, so the residents or the inhabitants of Hampshire County own it, what does that mean from a tax perspective? Is there taxation on it?
No.
Does any, so no, it just sits, who pays for?
Who pays for the ongoing maintenance?
Yeah.
We do, the Hampshire Council of Governments pays for it, so, and we lease the top floor to the state, and we lease the basement to the law library.
Okay.
And those revenues go towards maintenance and upkeep, we have a janitor on staff, we also pay for the HVAC maintenance, we pay for like the trees, the historic trees that are around, we put five thousand dollars into that silver maple last year. So we, we do our best, but as a government body that does not collect taxes, it's very hard for us to, you know, fit the appropriate bill. So this is deferred maintenance that's been deferred probably since, you know, close to eighteen eighty-six when it was built in the first place.
So other than being situated in Northampton, Northampton doesn't see any financial gain from having this building in their environs?
From a bottom-line point of view, or, I mean, I think they certainly do from a, you know, it's a contributory building to the historic district in downtown Northampton, it's certainly, you know, a gorgeous structure.
Maybe it draws people in.
All right, but there's no revenue going back to the city. Correct.
Okay.
Dan?
I don't have any questions right now.
JP, anything for Mr. Ford?
A few questions. I've struggled with this one.
Very much.
There you go.
Rather than, rather than opinion on whether we should do it or not, I'm just asking if you have questions that help you understand the project, that's all.
It would help me to understand how you came up with your method of assessment for the communities.
Well, so the total figure was a percentage of the total overall budget of the, you know, well, that was probably more, but, you know, close to four or so million dollars that was going to be needed to do the entire project. We set aside, I believe, one point three or so for the, all of the communities of Hampshire County, and then we applied the percentage of population to that figure, and that's where we came up with the final numbers.
How did you come up with that?
How did I?
How did, how did you come up with that, that method of assessment?
Why did you use population, I guess?
Oh, yeah, just a fairly standard way of doing, could you do it that way or equalize property value, but we chose the population method, we didn't want to, I mean, you know, we couldn't have chosen any one of them.
I, I think the reason I ask is I think it assumes that the benefit is, is shared proportionately by population, and that someone who sits in Worthington and stays in Worthington gets the same benefit of the project in Northampton as the people who live across the street in Northampton, or on the other side of town in Northampton, or who hang out in Northampton all the time. And I'm not sure that, I mean, the people in East Hampton, we all, sometimes, many of us go to Northampton, I love Northampton, I love the historic district, I'd love to see the building restored. I feel that we're, the state, as a state, are paying it as all of our citizens equally in supporting the project as a state, but I, I have some real concerns about the way proportionality is used by population as opposed to benefit by the, by the, by the individual communities, or the residents of the individual communities. For example, if you're in Northampton, I think they're going to get ninety percent of the benefit of the project. It's their historic district, it's the cornerstone of Northampton. It really is their centerpiece.
Well, they did put in a lot of money, that's one of my.
They put in two hundred thousand proportionately, their proportion, if I'm not mistaken, was on the order of two hundred and forty or two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty, yeah, we'll go back to that.
Two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's proportion, and yet, that proportion isn't ninety percent of the one point three billion that I personally think might be a better way of looking at the benefit of the project. The communities that, that are in the council of governments, although you're saying you're here to represent the whole county and all the inhabitants, the communities in the council of governments, only fifteen out of the twenty in Hampshire County, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
That are members of the council of governments. Amherst, Northampton, East Hampton, Ware, and I think Worthington are the communities that have chosen not to be part of the council of governments. It would seem to me that at least some bet, some greater benefit should be borne by those who are part of the council of governments. So those are two reasons I'm having some real problems with approving a request for another community. While we have some really great, any stamp needs like the Old Town Hall, which is going to end up being a five million dollar project, not sure how much we CPA, but it could be a significant portion of that five million.
That weighed on the committee's minds.
That weighed high on the committee, and I'm, and I'm sure that was one of the results, reasons why we had a six to two vote in the committee, and that's pretty much unheard of.
And why it reduced it. Mr. Rowland is here, he's a member of the CPA, I thank him for coming, and you voted in favor, if I recall.
I did.
Can you, I, I'd like to ask you to speak to it as a CPA member, because, I don't know if you heard my opening statements, Greg, were you there for those?
I was.
All right, well, Greg voted in favor of it, and I wanted to get another perspective from the CPA before I get to the public, if you don't mind. Go ahead, Greg, if you have anything to say in favor, because you were in favor of it.
I understand, JP, what you're saying as far as the benefit. This is a messy situation, I don't think it's an ideal situation. It was a struggle for the committee to grapple with this, and I think, I appreciate that it could be a struggle for the finance committee to grapple with it. I think at every level along the way, there's some really honest and good questions to ask about this. One of the things that, you know, as far as benefit, there's another way of looking at it, which is who owns this, and traditionally, who has benefited from, from the county courthouse. We, we own it. East Hampton residents are ten percent approximately of the owners of this building. We have not paid in any money into a capital reserve account of any sort for years.
Ever.
And we won't, you know, and that, and that's the reality. This is really, for me, personally on the committee, this came down to, the situation stinks, I feel like our back is up against the wall a little bit, I'd like to see the state step up and release the grant money. They need some form of, some signal from the surrounding communities in order to release those funds. And East Hampton is in a position to take a leadership role in encouraging other people, other communities to step up and give a token amount so that the state will release the funds. If the state does not release these funds, I believe that structure will be in significant disrepair and possibly in a significant hazard for individuals who are in there. So it, it would be great to say, you know, to wish it away, the situation, but I, ultimately, I felt like in order for us to, to get this building back up to where it needs to be, the residents and the owners, you know, the residents of the county who own the building do share some responsibility for leveraging the four million dollars or however many million dollars the state is holding back in order to get the project underway. I do want to say that I ran my own numbers and calculations on, on this, and from a, from a numbers perspective, I think that one of the most important things is what you mentioned, Dan, no, no dollars go to this project unless the state releases the grant. We are not spending a penny here in the city of East Hampton unless the project is a success.
And that's the same for all CPA communities, am I right?
Yes.
Including Northampton.
Okay.
So I think either the project is a success and we spend twenty-five thousand dollars, which for a homeowner here in East Hampton, who has a property that's three hundred thousand dollars, that's a one-time four-dollar payment for them, that's how much they would be contributing. If they own a two hundred thousand dollar property, it's a two-dollar payment. It's, it's a buck fifty per resident across East Hampton for a one-time, or at least, you know, I'm assuming it's hopefully a one-time ask for the twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, Mr. Ford may come back around and ask again, I, I have no idea, but.
Oh, I'm sure he will.
But what right now, I think, is, is trying, is really trying to leverage our, what is a pretty small amount spread out over our entire, you know, entire population, which can potentially leverage other communities to step up and ante and release the state funds and save this building.
I wanted to make sure that, for point of information, this, what he said one time, it is a one-time, there is no commitment on the part of the CPA to fund the next phases of this project, there's nothing. You can come back and ask again, we may say no because we'll be deep into the town hall or whatever, but this doesn't commit us. I'd like to open it up to the public, if you just, if anybody who wants to speak, could you just state your name for the record?
What exactly are they going to do to the courthouse?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Can you just state your name and the street you live on?
Emily Nichol, two eighty-two Loveville Road.
Thank you.
And I think what you're asking should go to Mr. Ford, what they're going to do to the courthouse?
Yes.
Hi, Emily. So we've already tackled the first phase, which was the restoration of the front steps and the front portico roof, as well as the steps on Gothic, and we did that with the first donation from Northampton, the donation from Goshen, and the five hundred thousand released from the state. The next critical phase is the tower itself, so when you look at the building, that large tower that faces south is literally falling apart, so that clay tile roof is falling down on the grass, the lead flashing on the windows has all fallen down, and if you look at the flashing, it's, it's just an absolute disaster. So the tower itself is leaking very badly, and that water penetrates through the entire mortar that holds the building together, and so it's really a critical safety hazard to get that tower sealed and restored. The, the last two phases after that would be to restore the original slate roof, which is also sagging pretty significantly in the middle, and also that reinforce the foundation itself. So that building has a granite facade, but it's actually not built out of granite, it's built out of rubble. So if you peel that granite away, what's underneath it is these chunks of stone, rock, brick, kind of held together with eighteen eighty-six mortar, which is now just dust. So it is important that the entire project go forward at a fairly rapid clip, but to ask your question specifically, this phase, the one point three million that we're trying to get from the state immediately, plus any other donations we can have, would go to the complete restoration of the south-facing tower.
Okay, so there's nothing being done inside?
No, I mean, the windows need to be replaced, those windows were, those, those windows were like plexiglass, they were put in the seventies, and they destroyed the historic windows that were in there. So any work that happens to the building needs to comply with historic preservation standards, so the windows are going to have to be replaced with historically accurate windows, that's really the, the inside-ish work, if you will.
Okay, now, okay, this is all finished, now what's going to have to be done after this four million dollars?
Well, hopefully nothing, I mean, hopefully then there'd be some sort of agreement with the state for more robust, ongoing maintenance, or an agreement with DCAM to make sure that the building is incorporated into, into the courthouse facilities. As I mentioned, they, they did put out a, a report on the courthouse facilities, and they did mention the Northampton facility or Hampshire County facility as one of the first phases, but it is unclear as to if this particular building, the historic part of the, of the court structure, is, is part of that restoration or not. It's our intent to work with the delegation to make sure that after we restore the building, it is meshed in with the rest of the courthouse facilities to make sure that it is maintained over time, and so we want to, you know, come back to you for another two hundred years.
Yeah, like that's going to matter, right? My question is this, if we give to North, Le-Hamshire County with our taxpayer money here in East Hampton, is this the first time we're going to do this, or is this going to be something that we continue to do?
As I just said, ma'am.
You want to move it into any, any city? If, if, say, say, okay, Holyoke wants to restore a building over here, are you going to jump in?
Let me answer it in two ways. We're not committing to anything like that. We're allowed legally to help another community, but it has to be historic preservation. In this case, this is a, as, as we said, this, the county, the people, residents of the county own the building. Somebody in Holyoke wants us to do something, they better prove that the, that all of us own it, I don't, I doubt that would happen. So. So, one, there's no commitment to anybody else, and two, there's no commitment to this project beyond this money, and three, this is because this is a county historic building, there was justice served there, there's history for the whole county, East Hampton a part of that. That's why we're considering it, it has nothing to do with any other community.
So my question is this, if we want to restore the, the old city hall here, now are we going to ask for money from other communities to help us?
They wouldn't give it to us because they don't have anything to do, the difference is this building is a county-owned building, I mean, it's a, residents of the county owning it. I mean, we wouldn't spend money to support a Northampton building that's only owned by the city of Northampton, like the Academy of Music, we wouldn't support that. We have our own to support, they have a CPA and they're supporting that. But this is a different project because it is a, the reason it's being, was considered by the CPA is because it's a county, it's owned by the residents of Hampshire County, okay?
Now you gave out two different figures, one was 25,000, and what was the 135,000?
They are asking for a total grant for the entire phase, different population request of 10%, which for us is 135,000.
And where is...
That's what they asked for, they were asking for a third of it, the original request, I think it was 46, we reduced that in the CPA primarily to leverage the grant, it's a token amount, but it's an amount, it says, all right, we're going to support this because we believe in historic preservation, but you state, you've got to give us more money, you've got to release your money. So we reduced it, because, A, because we didn't want to support, I didn't want to spend that kind of money, and B, we want to tell them to give us more money. So that's why it's reduced.
Okay, so now you're talking 25,000.
That's what's on the table.
Okay, so why are these 135,000?
That's what was originally asked for, it has nothing to do with what we're going to give them. I mean, we could ask for the moon, and Mr. Ford will do that, but he's not going to get them. Somebody else want to speak to this project, sir?
I do, I'm Tom Bigsby, I own several pieces of property in this town.
Mm-hmm, but you're not a resident?
Director of Core Services at Northampton State Hospital.
Okay.
Prior farmers, and they closed. I know what the state does to business buildings, and what they don't do. Northampton had some beautiful buildings that were, Northampton State Hospital, buildings, beautiful building, woodwork, everything. They had an auditorium in there that rivaled the Academy of Music for sound, I'm into music, you could ping your finger and you could hear it all over the place. I went to the fiscal manager at the state hospital, and we tried to get money to save that part of the old main building, they wouldn't spend a dime to fix the roof. I'm a landlord, I have to fix roofs, that's the most important thing. You don't let your building become a derelict that, that building is in downtown Northampton. The state did not care about the buildings in Northampton, their preservation people did. Should we in East Hampton worry about Northampton's Main Street, the edifice on Main Street, that the state did not maintain that building for years? It's not my building, I live here in East Hampton, the county government has been dissolved. Hampshire County is just a county. The state had money, the legislators, to give themselves and the judges and so forth, the $46 million pay raise here reasoning how they're looking for money. You're on a slippery slope here. Once you start to give money to the county, there's all kinds of other county buildings out there that need work, and other state buildings, the state is looking for every penny they can get from you. They're also talking now, putting a 2% tax on sugary drinks, they're telling us how we can live and drink and do, I mean, I own property and their law about marijuana, it impacts me as a landlord, but there's no, it's a federal offense if somebody's growing it or using it in my buildings, but I have no recourse. I believe we need to go back to the state and tell them to maintain that, it's not East Hampton's responsibility, you're on a slippery slope here. And if you're going to pursue this, I think it ought to go to the people in this town. I'm a senior citizen, and I don't like paying this kind of money, of course I'm able to, but when I first, some of my buildings, I wasn't paying a whole lot for the community money, and when they first came in at 3%, in a way I understand it, that, that was, all that money is generated, it comes into this from real estate taxism, all right, not real estate taxes, but deeds and so forth, that's where your money's going.
The state money comes over.
Yeah, right, and there's less and less of that lately.
Yeah.
And as you say, there's more and more people at towns now that are getting into it. I hadley just said, we're not going to support it, I read in the paper, I don't think we should give them a dime, it's not our building. What about giving it, did the people in town at that beautiful Dutch colonial in the center of town, the developers, did they come here looking for money to do that building? No, that was a derelict looking building, and somebody, the owners, made it look, I don't know if you're familiar about the building I'm talking about, but that's, that's a beautiful thing in addition to our town, and they didn't ask for any money, the state needs to do that with their building. I saw what they did, I know what they do, I worked with the state for 28 years, and I'm upset with spending any money, I don't mind spending it for preservation, or Nonituck Park or something like that, those kind of things, I have no problem with that, open space, but I do go into Northampton, Northampton could well afford it with Smith College, if it means that much to Northampton, Northampton should come out with money.
Okay.
I'm going to end right here because I'm furious about, if you're going to do this, I think it should be shoved back to the taxpayers to decide if they want this.
Okay.
Because a landlord, it's tough, being a landlord today and trying to get people to pay their rent, these people are, people are in trouble, they may not realize it.
Okay, anybody else for the public?
I'm done.
Do you have anything to say, anybody else there?
No, but I think when this was passed, the CPA, when people voted on it, they were not aware that this money could be used anywhere in East Hampton. They thought this money was going to East Hampton. Now, I think a lot of people would not have voted to have a CPA. Now, how long is this in effect, and when do we vote on this again, to eliminate the CPA?
Oh, that's not going to happen unless...
It's not going to come up for long.
Well, it can come up, I guess, by petition, but this funding of an outside project has happened before when we recently protected our water by funding a Southampton location.
That's different.
Well, it has direct impact on East Hampton. This is a one-time ask and has never happened before, and it may never happen again, I just don't want you to think that this happens all the time, it does not.
Well, my fear is, because you do it one time...
It's a slippery slope.
...it'll start becoming common practice.
Okay. Greg?
I hear you, I mean, there are, there's a legitimate concern about approving things and opening the door to later things, I just, I want to be absolutely clear, from the CPA committee perspective, there is very, very little appetite for sending any money outside of East Hampton, truthfully. Nobody around that table wants to have to send any dollars outside of East Hampton, or to fund a project that doesn't benefit the residents of East Hampton. It's why we reduced from a 135,000, we're giving a token amount of 25,000 to try to leverage the millions of dollars from the state. The alternative is that that building, which actually does benefit some East Hampton people, it is the courthouse, will eventually collapse. It's not, it's not, it's not a solution, it's not a long-term solution, and that's my concern, my personal concern, is that this, this does not resolve the issue of ownership for that building.
Your meeting is at 6:30.
The fact that the county residents own that building, at some point, we need to address that, because the county system is dissolved, and this is a black sheep situation, it's a messy situation, and it needs to be...
I kind of have to move this along, because we have a lot of other subjects, and I only have, well, I have till 6:30 for an ordinance meeting, but I'm going to say something, it'll surprise Greg. What I'm going to propose here is that I've kind of, I was lukewarm to begin with, and I've had a change of heart, and the main reason for that is the 15% match shocked me, $40,000 loss, and the potential for even more money coming out of our coffers, and I hear, I listen, you're not the only one who has these same concerns, the concerns that JP has. I, forgive me, I want to hear from the mayor, let's do that first before I finish my topic.
Thank you, Dan. Nikki Krawowski, Mayor Catcher's assistant, and her delegated mayor this week, so that's why I'm here to report on her behalf. The mayor has received calls and feedback that are opposed to this, so with that said, she was approached by a Gazette reporter for her statement, so that is why she had given it, and I'll read that just really quick. The Gazette reporter asked if she was opposed, and she said, yes, I am opposed, I have an obligation to the taxpayers of the city, and I do not believe that when our residents generously voted in the Community Preservation Act at the full 3%, they ever expected funds to be used for any other community other than East Hampton. With that said, the mayor would like the record to show that she has the utmost respect for the CPA committee, and the hard work that they put in, and for every other community committee and board that serves our residents.
That's all? Okay, so, I was affected by the mayor's opinion, I think it represents what the community, because, I thought when I was a councilor, this is an aside, I'd get a ton of phone calls, but no, the mayor gets all the calls unfortunately, for her, good for me. I had, just, what I started out saying was that I have this new information, the information first Hadley saying no, and then hearing from the mayor, I support, my article in the paper this morning was, I support the CPA's right to make historic preservation decisions and the process, and that we do care about the taxpayers, I was defending that, and I still defend that. And I'm here speaking now as a finance member of the city council, who if I was sitting in your chairs hearing this for the first time, I'd go, oh my gosh, what am I going to do with this? Then this 15%, I get all the things from the coalition, and I don't know if you saw that Greg, but we're only getting 15%, you might not have heard me, which translates, if it's 30% match, to $40,000 drop in revenue from this year to next. And, you may not have heard this, Springfield, Holyoke, and Boston are entering the CPA pool. Now that's a lot of taxpayer match that they have to do. Given that, I am going to request in a motion to the finance committee that we send this back to the CPA to review it, we have a meeting on the 18th for these two new information, because I believe that I will not support this at this time on the city council, but as a member of the CPA, I'm in conflict. I don't think I should represent the CPA if I'm going to do that to them, so I'd rather them reconsider it. And let me say what I think I'm going to ask them to do, either A, reduce it even further so that it's a token and it says, all right, we're supporting it, but not that much, and secondly, better still, let's wait and see if House Bill 2615 passes and we get a 50% match, that increases our revenue a lot, and if that happens, I'm not as opposed to donating to historic preservation, I think there's something to be said for that. But I hear the residents, and I hear everybody, and I hear the mayor, so that's my personal position right now. If you guys, this has been presented to us, if you guys want to vote on this today and say no, I would rather we didn't do that, because I also don't want to set the precedent that the council has refused to support a majority vote of the CPA. I'd like the CPA to reaffirm, or to hear this new information, the fact that we're not getting as much money.
So you said, two points of new information you think the CPA would consider, and may change their mind, was, one, the percentage going down, and what was two, the mayor's statement?
The mayor's statement, well, the mayor's statement, because she, I did state it, but I didn't state it, I just said she was opposed at the meeting. And also Hadley said no, so what's bothering me now is that this whole process is trying to leverage state money, and the state is saying, oh, well, we can't even give you the match that we promised you when we voted this in, now it's down to 15%. It was 100, now it's down to 15, it's going to go down further, a lot further. So this is bothering me, this is me, I'm not speaking for the CPA, and I feel in conflict because if we go ahead and move this forward to the city council, I can't speak in favor of it at this time, I want to, I want to bring it back to the CPA, that's my thinking right now.
So that's the motion on the floor, and so that's...
I didn't make the motion, I'm bringing it up for discussion, no, no, I want, JP, you wanted to say something?
All right. Well, I just wanted to say...
Well, Dan wants to say something, let me, let him, he was talking.
He hasn't spoken yet, so... I'm prepared to vote no on this, and I was hoping to be convinced otherwise, every reason I've heard why it should is also, I think, a reason why we shouldn't, I don't care what Hadley's doing, I don't care what these other towns are doing, it's East Hampton's tax money, where should it go, that's the question on the table for, as you said, the city council finances, so, but, new information is new information, and so I need to know, we've got three representatives from the CPA here, two...
Two, two members.
And JP.
She's a straight under.
Three representatives who were at that meeting, and is this, how new is this information, how drastic is this? When it was discussed, was that 50% a huge reason why those six people supported it? Did it have, did it affect the decision that day, and if it didn't, why would it affect it now?
Well, I'm saying, I'm changing my mind, and I don't want to represent the CPA, I'm in conflict, I'm a councilor and I'm the CPA chair, so I want to go back to the committee and express my concerns again. Rather than have this voted down before the CPA gets a chance to hear my point of view about the match.
So I just...
That's my position, that doesn't mean we have to do that, I'm stating a position, not necessarily a motion, okay?
But the information is new to all of the CPA members...
But they didn't have it at the time.
Since you met last night.
Yes.
Okay, so they may also be second guessing their...
Well, what also I'm hearing is, councilors, so far I've heard from JP, and I think you're a no, but, and Dan who are opposed, and I haven't heard from you, but I'm hearing a lot of negative, negative feedback, and I don't want this to divide the community about the CPA, that's another part of this that bothers me. I've struggled with this from the very beginning.
Yeah.
You work at the courthouse, okay?
I love the CPA, I love the courthouse, that's what I said, but it's not a matter of, do I love the CPA, and do I agree with them, do I love the courthouse, do I agree with the Hampshire Council's ask right now, those are both no's. $25,000 isn't a token amount to, it's a lot less than 133, but it's not a token amount, it can make a big difference in town, we just gave 10,000 to a project that's going to pay dividends to that project for years, so I don't like that language at all, I don't care about Hadley, I already said, Northampton gave money, that's fine, we're just talking about East Hampton. That, we're trying to, it's, we won't have to pay that unless the state also releases that bond, that's not the question before us, the question is, should we give them this $25,000? We're, if we're saying yes, we're hoping to get that bond, we're hoping to get 25, so to say, well, we might not have to give it to them, that's not a sell for me, that says, well, then we shouldn't give it to them, if we had, in the back of our head hoping not to, you know what I mean?
That's true.
So that's where I stand as of right now on this issue, but the fact of bringing it back to CPA, because one of the six yeses may have had a change of mind, I just don't know if that's appropriate, what if one of the other six yeses called in and said, you know what, I'm not so confident anymore?
I'm not just a, yes, I'm CPA chair, that's what I'm...
And so, I guess I don't understand why you want to bring it back, just because you don't feel comfortable speaking to it next weekend, the council meeting?
No, I can, I can report as you said, I mean, I just don't feel comfortable.
If you were one of the twos, you could still report it as the chairman, this is how...
Yeah, that's true, that's true, you're right.
I just want to make sure we're procedurally doing things the proper way, and not just, you know, kicking it back to kicking it back, when decisions are even made and voted on by the CPA, I respect them, as you said, you know, I don't want it to divide, I don't want it to...
I don't want it to divide it, I don't want the CPA members to feel the council doesn't support it, or any kind of perception that way, because the council has never voted, no, as far as I know, on a CPA ask, so...
Well, that doesn't sell me either.
I know it doesn't sell you, but I don't want...
Every single time we look at it, because we could say no.
Exactly, and you could change it too, you could say, oh, we're only going to give a thousand, whatever. That's what I, I want to go to Peggy.
Yeah, so my view of this is not substantially different than Dan's, I actually love that building, I think it is aesthetically beautiful in Northampton, but it's in Northampton, and they have a very different cultural... they have a very different cultural, bringing people in, I mean, their whole shtick is Main Street, and that, that's a cornerstone of it. And I could totally see them playing off of that in positive ways, which, you know, good for them. But, you know, the thought that with the things we have going on in this town, particularly in the old town, I feel like the timing is unfortunately bad, because in another time, maybe I would feel differently. But right now, I think our focus needs to be on our historic building, and what we're trying to do there, and some of the other things that we'd like to do with those CPA funds to dance point. $10,000 goes a long way. So that's potentially two and a half projects we could internally fund with that $25,000. So, my feeling at this point is, is if we bring this to a vote, I will be not...
Right. Before we take a motion, JP, and then Greg, and then I want to have a motion, because we have other projects to do. JP?
As I said, I have some mixed feelings about this, and although I would not vote for it in its current form today, I would not vote for another reason, because if it's deferred maintenance by the state that caused the building to fall into disrepair, why should the state then...
Not the state, us.
Us.
It's Hampshire County's building. When Hampshire County existed, Hampshire County...
Let it go, Greg. But for the last 20 years, Hampshire County hasn't existed.
Right. And the Hampshire Council of Governments, as the caretaker, certainly doesn't have the income stream to be able to maintain the building to the point that it's necessary. It hasn't been supported by the state.
So now we're going to the, to the population of Hampshire County and saying, you're the guys, you're the owners, pony up some money to help us leverage some funds from the state. That's what it sounds like. You know, it just doesn't sound like the way, in that form, I can approve. However, if you were to come back and say, you're the only community, or one of the few communities, who hasn't shown an interest in seeing this happen, I would look differently on the project. But when so few communities have said yes, one being Northampton, one of the biggest beneficiaries, and not in the amount that I think is reasonable, I would set the standard much higher for Northampton, and as I said, 80%. I would be inclined to approve some funds to show that we, we believe in historic value of buildings. In the absence of all of that, and since we're looking at, we're all, we are the owners, has anyone given thought to sell the property? What would be the, what would be the value, if the property were sold, to return to all the population of the county? I don't know. Just putting that on the table, a building in Northampton, 10 million? I don't know what it would be. But that could go a long way.
Anyway, I have to move it along, and that's not part of the discussion right now, JP.
Well, voting no is part of the discussion. Yes, if you come back with a plan.
Okay, good.
That supports, and shows other communities showing strong support.
Greg?
We do need a long-term solution, and that could be the long-term solution. The immediate need for the building, I think, is, is more immediate than, than that. But, just speaking from, as, as a CPA committee member, the CPA is tasked with something very different than what the Finance Committee is tasked with. My feelings won't be hurt if you decide, and this was a controversial issue, with, as I say, the CPA committee has very little appetite for sending dollars outside of East Hampton, very little. This was, this was the first split vote in the history of the CPA committee since I arrived. It was, the amount was reduced drastically, because we wanted to somehow get, you know, get those state funds to be released. But the task of the CPA committee is preservation, and this is ultimately a preservation project. And the people around that table are focused on important preservation projects in our region, specific to East Hampton. For the Finance Committee to turn around and say, guess what, we have a different approach, we have a different lens to which we look at things, no-go, I think the CPA committee will understand. I just want to say that. I know that, Dan, from what I'm hearing, you would love to see the Finance Committee not have, have a precedent of rejecting a CPA committee recommended project, but that's the process ultimately. And if the Finance Committee decides that it's not worth moving forward on this, I think you have to recognize that that's totally your prerogative. And I'm just speaking as a CPA committee member, we have a different view on, on, you know, the importance of preservation, and that's what we're tasked with.
Greg, I have to thank you, because that helps me a lot. Because as a CPA member, I'm struggling with that, and then I'm a Finance Committee member, and I hear taxes going out, you know, that's hard. And I was lukewarm to the project to begin with. But you've really helped me focus my own feelings on it. As a CPA member, I love historic preservation. I think it's worthy. On the other hand, as a taxpayer, and as a director of, as a councilor, I have a different reason for voting on things. So if, let me put this out there. If you guys want to vote on this project tonight, I have no problem with it. I'm glad I'm hearing from Greg, that, I think he's right. I don't think the CPA is going to be, as I fear, all upset about it. I think we have a different obligation, and I agree. I, I think that was excellent. So, what do you guys want to do with this? We have a lot of other things, although they're fast. I'm, I, I, I have to say that I think we should vote on it, and now that I've heard from Greg. I may abstain, but I, because I can't, I can't go against the CPA, but on the other hand...
I think you need to abstain.
Because I'm in conflict.
You are in conflict, and...
Internally.
The statement you just made, I can't go against the CPA. Well, to me, that's a big conflict. That's staying a break there. So I feel like you...
Well, I, I will abstain. I may vote no as a councilor when it gets to the thing. I may abstain, but let's put a motion on the table.
Dan, you want to go?
Or supplemental appropriation request for $25,000. You don't have to read the whole thing, just...
Would I make a motion that we approved, and then we all vote no? Should I make a motion that...
No, you have to make a motion to, in the positive, and then move on.
Motion for $25,000 to be appropriated from CPA's undesignated fund to the Hampshire County Courthouse Restoration Project.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I will abstain, given my position as a CPA member.
Nay.
Nay.
Unfortunately, the project has been defeated, two to zero, with one abstention. Sorry, Mr. Ford.
Hey, you know, it's for the retirement service.
We spent a lot of time on it. And I want to thank all of the people who came to speak to this. Thank you very much, Greg. JP, thank you.
Thanks for hearing.
Everything, you know, we have public meetings because we listen.
Does this still go to the full council?
It has to go to the full council. Oh, Mr. Ford?
Yep.
You may be able to convince the full council, but it's next week, the 17th, if you want to come. Yeah, maybe you can. But for anybody who wants, this is going for the full council next Wednesday at 6:15.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Thanks, JP, for coming.
You're on a different side of the business than you were before. Oh, thank you, thank you. Likewise. Glad you came.
Thank you very much for everybody. Thank you, thank you. Very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thanks for listening to us.
That's our job. Our job is to listen. And I love it when we have community... Let's get Patty. She's been patient. Thank you, Patty. Let's deal with, Patty is here on the Enterprise Funding. That's the only one you're here for, aren't you?
Do you want my snow one, or you want my, either one? Both of them or mine?
Well, the snow one. We know you spent the money, but okay. If we say no, it just means we have to put all the plows away or something.
I'll take it out of your free cash.
We could sell them. Let's start with the, let's tell, tell us about the request for the, obviously, the Cottage Street Dam Action Plan. That looks urgent.
Yes, it is. We, Department of Dam...
Hey, guys. Guys, can you take it down the hall a little bit? Sorry, Patty.
When all these buildings were finished, 15 Cottage Street, changed the status of our dam. We were significant, is what we were classified as, and now we are considered a high hazard dam because of all the people living on that side. So with that new classification, we are now required to have an emergency action plan, and that's being required by the state, it's mandated.
And they come to us, we're downstairs, because we're in here for 6:15.
I thought, she told me 6:30, I apologize.
No, it's, it's fine. It's posted 6:15, but we're...
Put a sign on the doors, Sam.
I don't, no, no, I don't have any tapes.
All right. Sorry. I apologize. Significant, what does that mean?
Significant is the highest dam. You can, like, it has the most, it's for lives being lost if that dam lets go.
Significant risk if there was a failure.
Was the medium, and now it's a high hazard. So there's three classifications on dams. We were in the middle, and now we're at the top.
Which is?
That, if this dam...
Loss of life.
High hazard. The other one was loss of life, too, but now they have more families living over there, and they have the agriculture, or the agriculture with the community. So what they have to do is now it has to, the dam used to have to meet a standard on a certain storm. If a certain storm, size storm comes in, then the dam has to hold up to that. Now it has to hold up to a bigger storm. So, the what-ifs of the world. So they're going to have to classify this, that a bigger storm comes in, these engineers will know, is that dam going to hold up? And then what's going to happen is if that dam fails, what is the city going to do? What's our, what's our plan? What's going to happen if that dam fails? We have to have something in place so that the city knows where we're going to go between...
You're talking about emergency action?
Yep.
So this was not required when it was a medium?
Correct.
But because it's a high hazard now, it's...
Now, because of the buildings, it became newly classified. We used to have to do a report on the dam every five years, and when that last report was completed, they figured out that 15 Cottage Street was now there, and that's when they came up to, you are now considered at the high...
I'm just curious, why isn't this a public safety request? Why is it a DPW request? Because it sounds like a public safety...
Because it's dam safety, and we own the dam.
DPW runs the dam, so it's...
Correct. It's under our jurisdiction.
So you're only talking about emergency action. You're not talking about maintenance that needs to be done now because they're worried about it?
Nothing. All this is a piece of paper that's going to pull everything together.
Going to get everybody out of the building to high ground.
Hopefully.
Eric, can I get to 15? I just told you what we're going to do.
Who's going to, so is, is this $15,000 needed because we need to have a...
The plan. It's the whole thing. The engineers...
Do we have a contractor, though, that's going to do this?
We went out and we asked three contractors, which are engineers. You have to be certified to be the engineering firm, so we had, went to three different companies.
And they will do the whole plan?
They have to, yes.
In a nice binder?
Yep.
Okay.
And basically, one of them is the one that did the reports, because you also have to have them do those reports that are mandated by the state every so many years. So the one that did that last report is actually, I think, the one coming in to do the...
So, emergency action plan would say, okay, we're having a lot of rain, and there's a lot of flooding possible. That plan comes into existence, and it might mean sandbagging, it might mean...
Relocating.
Relocating people. Where do they go? Like, do we put them up in high schools?
Traffic patterns, I would imagine.
All of that stuff.
Everything. But it has to be in place.
And it has to be written down and placed in our emergency services, so they know what to do. And right now, we have nothing like that, because there was no worry before?
There was, it wasn't mandated by the state, because we were not at that standard.
Oh, because we were a medium?
We were a medium. It wasn't medium, it was called significant, and now we're high hazard.
Okay.
Because of all the residential...
Okay.
Was the low...
I think so.
Insignificant.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's a beaver dam, and they're not worried about it falling down. Sorry, I'm making light of a very serious subject.
That's okay. So, yeah, this all came in, like, in between engineers, so we're kind of like behind the gun.
So the state came and inspected the dam and said, oh, you put, you have all these old apartments across the streets, and now you're going to...
No, we did the inspection and sent it to the state like we were mandated to do. And when it went to the state, they said, oh, now we see there's changes in the area, and now you are now, we are now changing your dam, so that now you are a high hazard.
It makes sense. I mean, we have, daughter lives in that apartment. I'd like to see a plan.
Really care.
Is there any date when this needs to be completed by?
I, yeah, we're past it.
Did you already spend the money, so we have to...
No, no, I promise.
No, 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 I'm just saying, we have to, is this a refund of the account or something?
No, it is not. No, it is not.
Okay.
How far past it are we?
May 1st, I think, was our, oh, as I said, it got kind of lost between the two. We didn't have an engineer, and I think it went, and then nobody had it, and the new engineer all of a sudden just got this.
If approved, how long will it take you to get these people on?
They are willing to come in, and the reason we're going with them is they'll have it done in four weeks. Some people said 12 weeks, and we said, no, we can't wait 12 weeks.
The state's not going to find you for not having it done by May 1st?
Because we have, in the middle of getting funding, and we already have somebody, they're, they're working with us.
That's nice.
Yes, that's very nice.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Motion?
Motion...
Unless, wait a minute. Did Nikki or Melissa do have anything to add?
Motion for the approval of the following appropriation from Enterprise Routine Yournings in the amount of $15,000 to Capital Water Cottage Street Dam Action Plan to provide funds for an emergency action plan for Cottage Street Dam.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can vote for this one. Okay, that's approved. Let's talk about the snow and ice. Obviously, I'm very happy that we're no longer in deficit. We used to have deficit spending, did we not, way back when we didn't have free cash?
Isn't this a topic?
No, I'm talking about, it used to come out of an excuse budget, way back.
And if you don't fund this, that's what happens.
But no pressure.
But we have money to fund it, is what I'm happy about. We don't, in the past, we don't have, we didn't have money. It would be deficit, so this is excellent. Does this, Melissa, does this take us down to near zero on the free cash?
Oh, with the free cash?
No, I think, Nikki and I, we both have 138,000.
After this, okay. I'm also happy I didn't have to sign a lot of purchase orders. That was a nice law.
We'd love to.
So we spent 519,000.
Right.
Even though we had a warm February, which is...
There's a lot of little storms.
Melissa, sorry, is the 138 exclusive of the 15,000 we just, or is it just for the...
That's Enterprise.
So after both of these things are approved, that's where we are?
Yeah, because the 15 is coming out of a different fund.
Oh, it's not coming out of...
That's Enterprise Routine.
Yep, sorry.
Okay.
And now back to, did the mayor have any commentary?
No. Pay it.
Make a motion?
Okay.
To approve the appropriation of 319,000, yeah, 319,494.51 cents from free cash to snow and ice.
I guess I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we don't have to have a budget deficit.
Thank you.
Well, the council has to say yes, I think. Thank you. What else did we have? We have school Medicare.
Can we take my trash?
Yeah, we have to do the Medicare budget. I guess they need money to pay the Medicare, or you need money to pay the Medicare bill?
So it's just payroll taxes, which we estimate every year, depending on, depending on what, what people get paid, how much overtime there is, how many people get paid on payroll through grants or stuff, and it fluctuates. I, I, it make the budget kind of tight, so now it's like, eh. There's a big school payroll, you know, in June, we pay. The teachers have earned their entire annual salary, so they get to pay some to through them up, to get them through the summer, so you have to have enough in there.
And we pay all the insurances. This is not a school department issue. This is...
This is not insurance. This is taxes.
I mean taxes.
Yeah, payroll taxes, Medicare tax.
But we deal with that from the payroll side. The school department doesn't deal with...
Correct. It's part of the net school spending formula, like, when we go through and assess, you know, that's why we track it separately for ourselves, like, how much is on our side and your side. But, yeah, I mean, we, like a lot of things, you know, in payroll, we just, the matching tax and benefits, we pay out of the general fund, and then we, you know.
And so there's no, nothing untoward here. It's just, you like to be really conservative and cut really close to the edge, and we just need 10 more.
And to be honest with you, I, you kind of guess, you go, oh, well, what's three times the last few pays we've had, or whatever, and will that be enough? And I'm, I, we don't need this much, but I was just like, if it doesn't happen, it'll just go right back to free cash.
Free cash.
And that's where it's coming from, free cash?
It's coming from the reserve.
Reserve.
But any, you know, any unspent appropriation, this, you know, will end in the free cash. So I thought better to have a little extra than to be really tight again with no time left.
And it's better because in June, you're ending up with a, it'd be an old bill or something.
Yeah, and then I'd have to come again.
That's a lot of accounting, you know.